All right, I'll call it a order.
Reporting in progress.
All right, I'll call it a order, the town about dessert planning board meeting for October twenty six, twenty twenty two. Welcome aboard. We are still in pseudo hybrid territory here where we've got board members present in the meeting room and we've got Christie joining us online as well as Heidi tonight. Board members present here, myself Chair William Hanley, Meredith Randolph, Tracy Keller, there's Christie. Howdy Christie. Welcome aboard. I don't think we need to get the Zoom spiel anymore. Plus, it's just just you and Heidi online, so. Goodness, CEO. And let's, let's dive right into it. We've got just a bunch of minutes to approve and anybody will feel free to correct. Yes.
Sorry, one thing is, can we get, it looks like there are people there. Can we get them to sign? A sign in sheet?
Yep, they're all nodding their heads yes that they signed in.
Awesome, wonderful, thank you.
Mm hmm. Or that they will or are. All right, so um, let me, if I get this straight, we need to go through three minutes approvals and the first one was from the from August tenth, right, where we need to correct the day.
You gotta correct the date. We said August fourteenth, but it was actually August tenth.
Good, and Dave's here too. Hi, Dave. Of course, you're on mute.
Hello.
Hello.
I, I would not have been late, except I went click Zoom and they had to update. Knocked that right in on it.
Red and Zoom update. All right, so Dave, we're just, we got minutes to approve and we're just saying that from August tenth, we needed to re look back and re approve those with the correct date, right? And the correct date should have been.
August tenth.
There we go.
Instead of the fourteen.
I make a motion that we correct the meeting minutes of August tenth to say August tenth rather than August fourteen.
Right.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Manley, aye. Then we've got the minutes from September fourteenth.
I was not there, or no, but.
Yeah.
Yes, I wasn't there.
I can make, Tracy Keller, I can make a motion to approve the planning board minutes from September fourteenth as presented.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. And then one more round. We got the minutes from the twelfth of October.
Don't you have August twenty four or something like that? But I thought in the last meeting that no one.
No.
Oh, no, sorry, yep. Well, I think so.
I think we did those. So on my list, I have the twelfth of October.
So you weren't here.
And I was not here.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve the planning board minutes from October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two as presented. And decisions, and the decisions that go with them.
Meredith Randolph, I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Christie.
I don't think they, they.
I didn't say they.
Okay, sorry.
I'm just gonna try to manually connect.
Christie.
She looks like she's fighting with her computer.
Mm hmm. Of course.
Oh, that's why we just.
Um, I'm gonna try to knock you off. Stop, um.
We can hear what he's.
Okay, now I'm back on. I'm good, I'm good.
You gotta vote though.
You gotta vote though, on the minutes of the, of October twelve.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, my son's AirPods jumped to my laptop. And so I am voting on the October fourteenth minutes?
Oh.
Twelfth.
Twelve, okay, aye.
All right, Dave wasn't there.
Nope, correct.
All right. There we go. And I wasn't there.
Yeah.
So all those in favor.
We did that.
We just did that, so we're good. All right. Minutes are behind us. Right, so item three, we got some two conditional use approval applications tonight. First one on the agenda is conditional use approval application fourteen, twenty twenty-two, name Wasco Cove Incorporated. Jerome Simmonsby, President, Agent Greg Scott and Terry Scott, location thirteen Sinclair Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map twenty-seven, lot thirteen. Zone is residential two, and the purpose is six B eight fences and walls exceeding CEO authority. We had a site inspection at four and was this one advertised and others notified?
Yes, it was advertised in the October thirteenth, newspaper edition, and a butter's notices went out October twelfth.
Fantastic. Any conflict of interest on this one? None heard. We had a site visit at, when was that? Four, four o'clock and Tracy, myself and Meredith attended and Tracy, why don't you give us the report on the site visit?
Okay, I'll give you a, a brief report, which can be elaborated by other people. We met with Mr. Simmons, Simmonsby, and he showed us the property and explained to us the path that the fence was gonna follow. We stood at the very lowest part of the elevation and looked up along a, a line to see where the fence was proposed. The fence will be made from a series of panels that are each themselves six feet tall and they will rise with the land and as the places where the fence is highest or where there has where the, where the panel is raised off the ground to make it level. And it's just, there's a gap there, so it makes it higher as it goes up the hillside. And it seems to me that this is an instance where there is a, there is a height issue, but the fence itself is between two amicable neighbors. And I think that's the extent of my report. Do you have anything to add?
Meredith.
Good fences make good neighbors. I can't think of a better example. Neighbors doing it together.
This is a pretty straightforward fence, you know, it's straight line, slight slope, steps up the slope. There we go. Right, Greg, we'll turn it over to you if you care to add anything to Tracy's report.
Well, we had, we had two things to refund about. One is fence makers tend, tend to make fences six feet until you add a post and a cap, you're over six feet. That's number one. And then when you add to it a three foot grade drop from high to low, you're really kind of forcing yourself in and out of compliance as you go up the slope, so.
Right.
About it, right, Jerry? The beer, I'm not here to object.
I have things, I think they've talked around it.
Yeah, I think there's they're still gonna eat your perennials.
No.
All right, I'll open it up for public comment.
Roger.
Anything? All right, none heard. I'll close public comment and let's first get a motion to find the application complete.
I make a motion to find the application complete.
Anastasia, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, Meredith, Randolph, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Manley, aye. Anyone care to make a motion to use the short form checklist?
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to use a short form checklist.
Anastasia, second.
No. Give that to Christie.
Yeah. Thumb wrestle.
Yeah. All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Manley, aye, short form checklist it is.
Now do we make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, now we do that.
It'll be to be complete first.
Yeah, we, we did. So we found it complete, we're using the short form, and now we make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, second.
Tracy got it. And then we press the pause button and we go through the review of the application. So I've got the application in front of me, the short form checklist, and let's wade through it. All right, and we're starting off with section six A. I'm gonna take my glasses off, section six A, general performance standards, six A one compatibility.
It's lovely. See application.
Yes. That's a the application, erosion sedimentation control, none, and a highway safety six A three, and a impact on town services, six A four, and a land suitability, six A five.
Well drained metal.
When they say, and a lighting outdoors, and a stormwater. And a vegetation, six A eight, and a dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases, and a findings of fact that the findings in fact are as presented by the applicant in the attached application and the conclusion laws that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
Meredith Randolph, I so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. It was six, six B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. This is not agriculture, this is not an air landing site. This is not excavation. And the reason we are here is because of six B eight fences and walls. See application, application's got elevations of the fence. Description of the fence. Plenty of info about the fence. This is also not sign regulations, and a, this is not a cell tower, and a, this is an animal husbandry two, and a this is in mobile food vendors, and a, this isn't a rooming house, and a, and this is not a hotel or a motel. So the findings of fact that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities and land uses described in section six B except for six B eight fences and walls. And that the conclusion was that section six B, it's not applicable except for six B eight for which the standard has been met.
Meredith Randolph, I so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Manley, aye. All right, and six C is pretty straightforward. Shoreland zoning standards were reviewed by the planning board. And that is totally in a, because you guys are not in the shoreline zone. So the findings of fact about the proposed law is entirely outside the shoreline zone. And the conclusion laws at section sixty is not applicable.
Meredith Randolph, I so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. And are there any permit conditions to this? I don't think so. So let's press play then and circle back to approval. Everybody in favor of approving the application is submitted, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. I think we just set the record for the fastest approved fence.
It helps when neighbors agree.
Yeah.
So now you just pull a building from that, put the fence on.
Yeah.
Is it different from this one?
Well, the permit was for.
There's a different fence, wasn't it?
No, it's the same location.
But it was one of six foot nine, over six feet, so it's just a site plan, so it's still on your law.
Yes, it's still the same location. Yeah. It's, it's.
I'll just have to revise it.
Less than a hundred.
I'll just revise it for plan one program.
When you can, guys, get in and sign the approval.
Like the long bill.
Yes, that was, I liked, I liked the hand drawn drawing. Not missing anything.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, second item on the conditional use approval application agenda for tonight is conditional use approval application. Fifteen, twenty twenty-two, name the harbor club agent is Roger Saint Amman Atlantic Resources Co. LLC, location eleven Dodge Point Road, Seal Harbor, tax map three lot twelve. Zone shoreline residential two, purposes section three point four and six B seven excavation or filling greater than a hundred and fifty cubic yards. And the project is shoreline stabilization. We had a site inspection at three thirty and was this one advertised?
Yes, it was advertised in the October thirteen newspaper edition and a butter's notices went out October twelfth.
Great, and any conflict of interest on this one? None heard. We had a site inspection at three thirty and perhaps Meredith could give us a report on her observations from the site inspection.
It was very wet. Uh, we observed where they're going to move some of the stones along the parking area so that they can access the shore and then walk down to the shore. Uh, it's a very gentle slope up. Not very quicky or anything like that, but you can see a bunch of water lines, seasonal water lines and stuff that have become exposed. So clearly the shore is eroding away. And there Roger showed us how they're gonna set just a few stones high so that it stops eroding and then set new vegetation on top, so there is a minimal amount, there's, there is some vegetation and an apple tree that will have to come out. But new planting will be set. And there was a great deal of water coming out of the storm drain at one end. Anything else there?
All the work is done above the shoreline. So it requires a different permitting than if I had come down to the beach.
Because of the bad water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the restoration, not necessarily all the maybe they'll drive down.
All right, well, turn it over to you then, Roger.
Thank you. Roger Saint Amman, Atlantic Resource Co., I'm here representing the applicant, which is the harbor club, as Bill so eloquently put it, chairman. So the project is as Chair Hanley mentioned, it's still graded in a hundred and fifty cubic yards, so it's gonna be approximately five hundred and fifty cubic yards of fill to stabilize the shoreline, pretty much in front of the harbor club. Most of it is lawn and low shrub vegetation along the immediate shore, except for the northern part as it extends off toward their pier, there's some taller shrubs and trees. The plan is to install a fairly low row of larger boulders, four to six foot size boulders to prevent the toe of the slope from eroding any further. And then above that, there's gonna be vegetation to blend back into the existing grade. Little over three hundred linear feet of shoreline there. There is a storm drain at one ends of thirty inch concrete pipe that will remain. We're gonna try and protect that and not obstruct that. Though the toe of the boulder wall is above the highest annual tide, so there is no direct impact of the coastal islands. We do have a permit from the main Department of Environmental Protection. An individual permit that the project does not require a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers because there is no direct fill below the high water running. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, well, open it up to the public comment. Considering no public is here in person or online, I'll close public comment. And let's get on with it. First, any motion to find the application complete?
I make the motion to find the application complete.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. What do you think, guys? Maybe the short form on this one?
I'll make a motion to use the short form.
Tracy Keller, I, I second that.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye, and then a motion, maybe.
Motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, we'll press pause and let's go through the review of the application. I've got the short form checklist in my right hand and the application in the left and let's.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Which I'm sure has been covered well by the BEP themselves, but I'm just noticing in your elevation or your section through the rock wall that the base of where you're reinforcing is below vertically below the hat line. Um, so is the hat line a horizontal line or vertical? See in the, in the lower.
Yeah, so the, the highest annual tide line is, is down here and we do like to excavate below that, even though we are above that line, we excavate below in case the beach moves up and down and shifts, the, that is a fairly sandy gravelly beach and so the, you always wanna make sure that that base row is anchored down below where the existing beach might be, just in case there's erosion or accretion. But it is, it is a horizontal limit.
That's actually below the elevation that makes the hat line actually a horizontal. Anyway, interesting, even though it's an elevation that's set at a, yeah.
You know, I just learned something.
Yeah.
It's so a vertical elevation is technically a horizontal limit.
Sure, so, so just imagine like if you, if you installed your propane tank up here and you were twenty feet down in the ground, you'd be below the HAT line, but you're above the limit of the coastal.
Weird.
Interesting. All right. Six A one compatibility. Say, see application.
It rocks, they're playing rocks there.
Yeah, erosion and sedimentation control. That's on the plan.
Yeah.
See application, highway safety, and a impact on town services, and a six A five land suitability.
See application.
Lighting outdoors, six A six, and a six A seven stormwater.
See application.
Vegetation, six A eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Six A nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. So the findings of fact are that the findings of fact are as presented by the applicant in the attached application. And the conclusion was that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
I so moved.
Anastasia, second.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. So section six B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses, so this is not agriculture, and a, it's not an air landing site, and a and it is excavation. Six B seven.
It's applicable standard.
And so see application. Six B eight fences and walls, and a sign regulations, and a wireless communication facility, and an animal husbandry, and a mobile food vendor, and a rooming house, and hotels and motels, and a so the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities and land uses described in section six B except for six B seven, and that the conclusion was that section six B is not applicable except for section six B seven for which the standard has been met.
Randolph, I so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Well, we are in the shoreline zone here, so let's go through section six C. And sixty-one agriculture. Let's, and a sixty-two archaeological sites. And see, we got the letter C application, sixty-five, essential services, and a parking area, sixty-six. And a sixty-seven marine and freshwater structure standards. And a, you're not building a pier. Sixty-nine. Sixty-nine roads and driveways. And a. Sixty-eleven water quality.
Applicable standard met.
See application. So the proposed use will include none of the specific activities and land uses described in section sixty except for. Sixty-two is. And sixty-eleven. And the conclusion was that section sixty is not applicable except for sixty-two and sixty-eleven for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Where we are in the shoreline zone, we gotta go through sections five nine. Bear with me, so. Uh, five nine one will maintain safe and healthful conditions, see application. Five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. See application. Five nine three will adequately provide for disposable of all wastewater, that's. And a. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or wildlife habitat. See application. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. See application. Five nine six will protect archaeological and historical resources designated in comp plan. See application. Five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. And a, you're not in the shoreline commercial district. And then, um, five nine eight will avoid problems associated with floodplain development. In a, you're above it. Um, five nine nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, B and C. Which standard has been met. And the findings of fact are see above and the conclusion was that all requirements of section five nine have been met.
Randolph, I said move. Tracy Keller second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
David Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley. Then are, are there any permit conditions on this one? You've already got the D and P. Permit, there's no Army Corps permit. So. No, no permit conditions on this one. So circling back to the application of approval, let's press play. And all those in favor of approving the application is submitted, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. I have to say, this is probably the biggest thing for me. Guys are just amazingly efficient and.
Well, when we get an application like this too. Expedites everything, so thanks for being so thorough as usual, Roger.
Thank you. I know I have Kim to answer to if I turn in something.
What's that mean, Roger?
It means that you have a high standard and I try to meet yours. I try to run up to your speed.
Okay, thank you. Not me, I'm just trying to help my board, make it easier for them.
All right, item four on the agenda tonight, other. Christie, we're gonna miss you.
You're not leaving, right?
You're not leaving, you just.
Yeah, I want to still be on the board. I can be an alternate, you know, when you guys are in a pinch, call me in. I just, like, there's only so many hours in the week and, um. I think I mentioned to Bill. One, the site with my new job working in Philadelphia, the site visits are hard, um, and not impossible, but hard. And two, um, I'm in training to be, um, a crisis line person, so the phone will get handed to me. I mean, I think everybody knows that the ripple effect from COVID. Means there's a lot of people suffering right now and there's not a lot of people. Um, trained to be on those crisis lines, so that's gonna take some time to do that, but I will be an alternate and maybe I'll even come back.
Doing a crisis line in relation to the park or is that just a?
No, 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 a crisis line, um, for a dot org in the state of Maine.
Good for you.
A plus, Christie.
But use me as an alternate. I mean, I know, like, our last minute that, our last meeting that Meredith chaired because I was on. Percocet for my turned ankle, um, we, we, I was like, I did not chair tonight. We had three people and it was like. I, I for second, I, I for second, you know, it was pretty skinny, so.
One of the complications though is like, you know, I was conversing with Gloria and Gloria. Um, would prefer to stay as an alternate member, so we're gonna have two alternates, but obviously if we're in a. In a pinch, we'll ask some, one of you to, to, or even if we all of you to step in as needed.
Yeah, no, definitely, and you know, whatever I can do to help, I just. Uh, too much on my plate and something has to slide off in some way to make room for some other things.
Got it. Well, those are some pretty noble other things, so. We're gonna miss your consistent voice on the board, though.
Well, thank you, but please don't hesitate to reach out when you need me. I can make myself available. I just need to get a couple more hours every week. That the training for the crisis line is forty-seven hours. And then you have to pass, uh, twelve tests before they let you manage the phone for. Extremely good reasons, right? Like when people call a crisis line, like. You are their lifeline and like, you can't really screw it up, right? Um, so anyway, I just need to dedicate some time to that right now.
Absolutely.
Do we need to determine who's gonna be the next vice chair?
Yeah, so do we need to vote then? Yeah, Christie to an alternate member and then vote in a new vice.
It's already been approved by the board, right? Did they approve her to go to an alternate? No?
I don't think so. Yeah, this is tidy. No, they haven't said anything about this. This is the first I've heard.
So why don't, why don't?
Was Christie after requested or just Bill?
Yeah, who requested? I, 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 I think. I was gonna say me.
I'd start with Bill. Bill should probably just write an email to Derlin and. Mention it and. See what he says.
I think it's set up to, you know, as people progress forward, sticking step back. Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, so I'll write an email to Derlin.
And the next, the next board meeting is at the ninth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you need me for the ninth, let me know. Next week I'm out of town, I'm in Tennessee, but, um, the following week I'm around. So if you need me as a full board member for one week. I don't have a train to catch or anything. I need to just step back a little bit, so if you need me for one more week before things go through, that's fine.
Got it.
If the quarry comes back to us, then we certainly want you back for that.
Well, you know, I was thinking about that in, in terms of being an alternate is like. I, I can make myself available for that. I mean, I wouldn't wish on anyone the cart. And getting up to speed on the, the cart. We should give that to Stephen, uh, Stephen King as his next.
There.
You put your Halloween costume there.
The cart, that would be pretty scary. I mean, no, I mean, like, I think that's. Really realistic and probable that it is coming back, right? I mean, is that where the hockey puck is going? Or we're not gonna talk about it, but anyway, I can be available for that.
Yeah.
In, in small, uh, unreportable unmarked bills.
All right, so I'll send Derlin an email. Any other, other?
Is that the process, though, is you send Derlin an email that says I'm requesting you go to alternate, the board selectmen say. Yes, we'll let her do it. Then the planning board has to do it and then the planning board needs to find another vice chair.
Yes, and we'll do that on the ninth.
Okay. Gloria.
There you go. I have someone else in mind.
Do you have a straw in your hand? Awesome, all right.
You mean, any motions for adjournment?
I make a motion that we adjourn the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting of October twenty-sixth. In the year of twenty twenty-two.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor, Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley. Thank you, I.
Well chaired, that was quick, thank you.
I liked how that flowed, that just.
You got the groove tonight.
It was like a dance. It must be the moon and the planets.